Notice to call a special meeting of the City Council, City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Royal Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
And we will have the applause of the ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Negretti, would you please?
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We have agenda item number one. That presentation pertaining to housing programs and seeking council direction with respect to the future. Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation?
Mr. Metzler, I believe, is going to make the presentation on this side.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At first, to answer the question about recommendation, there is no recommendation today before you. The intent of this program was to be responsive to an earlier request of the council, and that was to bring back a summary of the housing programs to discuss our future goals and objectives and how we want to actually utilize our housing programs going forward. And first, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, but secondly, I want to apologize for having taken such amount of time to get back to you with the presentation. It wasn't that it was a difficult presentation, it was more so that we had a lot of transition, a lot of organizational issues, a lot of cleanup just over the course of last year, including some personnel changes that really made it difficult for us to organize and get a lot of information and also come up with good recommendations as to what we think might be good next steps. But notwithstanding that time that it's taken, there has been a considerable amount of time that has been undertaken by staff, and I think before I'd like to start, I'd like for you to know who that staff is because they are, on the day-to-day, responsible for administering a very important responsibility, which is helping meet your affordable housing requirements. So first, our housing division in the Economic Development Department is led by Sophie Smith, who's here to my left, with Jenny Moran, Liliana Collins, and Lisa Correa, and Elaine Ferris does a lot of the accounting. She's not here, but she does help us keep our numbers in order. So it's a full-time team, dedicated responsibility, and I want you to know them first because they're the ones that are actually dealing with the day-to-day. But the first thing that I wanted to do, let's go ahead and jump to the first slide, please. To start off by introducing the subject to you, and you should have a paper copy of this presentation, so hopefully you can follow along. If I'm talking too quickly, please stop me, and certainly if you have questions, you're welcome to ask them as we progress. But I think the first thing that we wanted to really accomplish from you is defining first what affordable housing is, so that's something that we intend to cover today. We want to also describe to you the different funding sources because even for me, it can be a little bit confusing as to the number of different funding sources we have, and of course, each of those funding sources, they do fund a variety of different programs. So we also have to be mindful of the different programs, and the real fun, delicate part of it is that each funding source typically has different requirements applicable in each of the programs. So it's not always easy to match up the use of the funds to the actual programs. I want to talk through a number of the accomplishments that we've undertaken over the years, and certainly then wanted to discuss with you, you know, what we have as options going forward. One of the last directions we had from the council with respect to housing, affordable housing programs, has been more directly related to our NSP program, and that's something that we're going to talk about in a little bit more detail in just a few moments. The last direction we got specific to housing was basically to stop acquiring more, any more single-family homes. We had an inventory at the time of about 17 homes, if I recall correctly, and that's the program where we buy the homes, rehab them, and resell them. And I forgot to recognize, we do work very closely with the Development Department, and they've been very helpful working with us in developing scopes of work to actually make sure that when we are buying those homes, we're rehabbing them to a good scope of work and actually getting the work done in consistent with what we had asked for. So with that, that was the last direction we've had. Since that direction, we've sold all but one. There's one home that we actually have had problems just falling in and out of escrow, but largely we're at completion of that inventory to where we've sold the homes. Now we're sitting on funds available to decide what to do next with. So by definition, and this is something that's very important to recognize upfront because affordable housing can be misconstrued as to what it really means, but in the most general interpretation, affordable housing is a reflection of the housing price to a household's income, and it's not just, the household income is not static, it actually varies depending upon housing size. But what you have here is an illustration of household size and the type of income that that household can make to fit into one of those income categories. Very typically, our programs are geared towards the very low and low household. As you can see, that ranges on the low end, anywhere from $37,550 for a family of one all the way to $70,800. And I think the important thing to draw from this chart is that in large part, I think you can construe by looking at those incomes, that these are working households, these are not likely households that are doing nothing. They're making their effort to try to be productive in either through rental or homeownership, they're trying to contribute locally.
I'm sorry, I got to ask a question. I'm looking at the chart, I'm assuming it's the same one. Owner rental occupied hazard cost household income. I look at all the income, the definition, very low, low, moderate, and that's related to what cost housing? I don't see, just so you can buy a $100,000 home, $200,000, $300,000, $400,000?
Well, that, those numbers then get plugged into a formula that help describe what, or help define what a person can actually...
These are family income numbers.
These are family incomes. So if you apply this family income, I think what Councilmember Cox is driving at is what do they afford? You would actually have to go through an underwriting process, but this is where you would start if you were trying to underwrite the acquisition of a home, for example. So you'd go through an underwriting process where you show pay stubs, you demonstrate what the income is, and then you determine affordability, and typically, the affordability in this case is 30% of the income. So you could effectively use that 1340 number to be more or less your upper-end threshold as to what the mortgage could be or what the rental price could be for a rental unit, and that becomes the ceiling as to what is defined as affordable, and then from that, you can actually underwrite and figure a present value as to what a home price is. Can I answer your question?
I'm assuming there'll be an example somewhere along here that will show. I mean, we bought a house for $200,000, put $35 in it, it was supposed to be a low-income house, I never bought it at the time, I still don't, but I've never seen an explanation, even though discussed, I've asked, discussed, bought it up five, six times now. We were buying the houses for $195, $196, and $200, and the explanation, this was for low-income, I said, low-income can't possibly qualify for a home, and put it under $25,000 or $30,000 of those to fix them up, and doesn't possibly be for low and very low-income people. That was my objection, that's why I raised the issue in the first place.
Sure, and certainly understand, and there are a lot of variables, it's hard to apply that very basic example to every possible owner or renter. I mean, because the circumstances change, I can't speak specific to your example, but if I tried to elaborate on it, you know, something as simple as the housing size, you know, if it's a household of six or seven, certainly then their incomes can increase. If the incomes do increase, that increases the purchasing power. There's also down payment assistance that help also bridge those gaps to where if they also qualify for down payment assistance, that could be used to actually reduce some of that principal amount on the home to make the affordability. We are governed under our programs to ensure, no matter what, that they're meeting the affordable housing definition. So however which way it's underwritten, if there's a public assistance being offered, we are required, and we're actually required as a part of our reporting, to make sure we're proving that, in fact, that's a household that is buying a house or renting a house at an affordable housing cost using this definition, and we also record covenants against the property, ensuring the affordability and requiring the affordability.
Isn't there kind of a general rule on real estate lending that a person can qualify for a loan that would be roughly two and a half times their annual income?
That can vary, I mean, that's when interest rate factors in, you know, but quite honestly, what we've seen as standard underwriting practice, if you were to really get into the weeds of underwriting ratios, very typically, we've seen experience where mortgage companies like to underwrite to a 29% front-end, which is basically comparing the income directly to the mortgage payment, and a 41 back-end, and that actually covers other debt, you know, unsecured debt. But I guess the point of that was, our requirement is 30%, there's already very traditional underwriting standards that are 29%, so we're very compatible already with the underwriting standard. So I guess that's to say...
So meaning, income could be 30% of the mortgage?
Right.
Amount of mortgage.
Keith, the, I think Mr. Cox is referring to one of the NSP properties. The resale of the NSP properties, was that required to be to only people in these income categories, or what was, what were the details of those properties? Did they still fall under low income or what?
Yeah. They could go all the way to moderate income. So in the case of all of those homes, they had to be sold to families or households that met the requirements, such as moderate income. The example of about two and a half percent, I'm sorry, two and a half times or even up to three times the annual income of a household equate, what it equates to in terms of buying power for a home. That's about after it. So you could say that a family of four, where, let's say, a couple and two children make just about $78,000 a year, a little under that, they could afford, given where our interest rates are today, easily about a two and a half? Yeah, $220,000, $230,000 home with a minimum down payment, with a minimum down payment, and that would vary the dollar amount of house they could purchase, depending on what they had in the bank, maybe from a prior sale of a home, or from savings, that could increase their buying power to $250,000, for example. So the NSP homes that were in the $200,000, $195 range, they had to be purchased by individuals that fell into this household, into this affordable calculation.
And so with that, one of the most important reasons why we put the chart up here is we wanted to really try to illustrate, and that's the good example, to help illustrate that, you know, there's a negative perception associated with low and moderate income housing, which I think the negative perception would be that they can't afford the everyday home that's selling on today's marketplace, and based upon these incomes, when you, when you really dig into it, you know, they can't.
Keith, I appreciate this chart right here because when you talk about affordable housing, I was not aware, the wide range of incomes that qualified in, the size of the household, so based on that, three times your household income, which is, I don't know, travel rates, I could easily see how we got there. I just was not aware about the categories, very low, low, medium, and moderate.
Any other questions? So we just defined what is affordable housing, and one of the obvious next questions become why, why are we involved in this? And there's a lot of requirements that we have imposed upon us. One of the most basic is with respect to housing element law, and as you approve a general plan, and with that, housing element, the first two bullets combined kind of go hand-in-hand, but we do have an obligation as a city, as a part of our general planning process, to at least make available affordable housing opportunities. That housing element generally describes programs, but it's not an implementation document where it actually directs how to do it, and that's where some of these programs come in to at least help try to achieve in satisfying some of those responsibilities. Some of the more stricter and onerous of responsibility certainly come from HUD, Housing and Urban Development, and we get saddled with affordable housing obligations resulting from our entitlement status. As a CDBG recipient, we receive approximately $1.4 million a year that you participate annually on in actually allocating monies to benefit the low and moderate, low and very low households and families. There's a grant that we received, it's called the Cal Home Grant, that also has very similarly natured low-income, very low-income housing requirements that we have to meet and actually spend the money on. One of the more traditional ones that we had been used to for so many years was directly related to redevelopment. In the old days of redevelopment, when you had a project area, you generated a 20% set aside, you were obligated to spend that money on affordable housing purposes, and there was a calculation that helped describe exactly more precisely how many housing units you had to produce. And in large part, a genesis of our housing programs, a lot of them really started resulting from the redevelopment. They didn't go away because of the redevelopment, and ironically, with the dissolution of redevelopment, the housing responsibility didn't go to, go away altogether as well. In fact, you're familiar as much with the Housing Successor Agency that we have, and there's reason why we actually created the Housing Successor Agency. But with any proceeds generated by the Housing Successor Agency, there's actually obligation still to continue to spend that for the low and very low moderate income housing obligations. So a lot of, I guess the point with that is, why do we do it? Largely it's statutorily set or it's federally set due to the grant programs. And just to illustrate, more than anything, this is taken out of your housing element, but the housing element describes very generally whether or not these are achievable or not or even realistic, that's a whole other debatable subject, but very, you know, if there is one thing to draw from this, is that the proportionality of affordable housing units identified in bullet number two, that same proportionality can be applicable in provision of how we have to spend our housing money as a successor agency. So just to help give illustration of kind of the forecasted requirements if we're actually to build out the 700, or the 7,000 units.
If the, if the builder subdivision builds units that moderate-income households can qualify, and builds enough of those units in relationship to the total units that they're building, is there any kind of requirement of the city?
If they built them all, then you're satisfying your requirement. If it happened on the natural marketplace, and quite honestly, a lot of them have happened that way, just given the nature of our housing stock. The bigger challenge, I think, comes in the very low income categories, and that's where we have traditionally used some of our other programs. While we've used our other programs to satisfy other purposes such as redevelopment housing requirements, we could actually use them to serve dual purposes.
Keith, does this mean that we need to have 1,698 homes in the city that will cover anybody in that low stretch across the top of that chart?
No, this is resulting from projections that SCAG actually develops and imposes upon all the cities in Southern California. I think what they've done is based upon past growth patterns, they actually put out a black box that actually developed what number of housing units can be built in a city like ours, and then from that, they apply a formula to define of those units that can be built in your city over a period of time, how much of them need to meet certain, certain income levels. I think the bigger point from, from that exercise is to make sure that through zoning locals' ordinance is you're not discriminating.
Does that mean then, going forward, we have to add, I don't want to overly focus on the number, but those are the numbers in front, so does that mean we have to have 1,698 new ones?
If you build, if you build 7,371 units, that's what SCAG is saying, you're housing, you need to make sure that there's an ability to provide that level of housing for those income categories.
But that's, that tells us about the future, are we going to talk about where we are today?
Right, and this was just a simple illustration to tie into the general planning requirements.
So in the future, we will need to have, for instance, if we have 7,371 homes, then we must have 1,698.
If you can achieve that number, I don't think those numbers are, I think there's a lot of debate about, in fact, throughout Southern California, I believe there's a lot of debate as to the, how realistic those numbers are.
Well, actually, 1,698 units should be affordable to the very low income, 1,207 to low-income households. So we're talking about 8,000 homes for low...
Forty-two, forty-seven for the combination of low, very low, and moderate.
The moderate.
More than half.
So more than half of all the homes in Victorville had to be for low-income individuals?
For that spectrum, I mean, keeping in mind, moderate is a much higher and probably can be achieved just on, on the market, the way it currently exists.
With the new court rulings on inclusionary, Mr. County, requirement of, the city can require subdivisions to have inclusionary housing, can the city require builders and subdivisions to provide these as a part of their permits?
That's the way it's going right now with most cities in the state, yes.
Wasn't that appealed?
I don't know if it's been appealed yet or not.
Well, I thought it was appealed, and we lost the appeal.
I haven't, I have to get...
Now it's up to the cities to adopt it.
I'll have to get that data, I haven't explored that one.
Well, I've read about the court cases and the appeal cases, but I haven't seen anything from the council, I'd like to know because I think it'll make a difference on how we address our housing.
Absolutely.
So with that, going forward, and really kind of, kind of trying to drill down to what we have, what we administer, what we do, and to seek the guidance as to how we want to continue with each program, so this slide is intended to help illustrate the funding sources we rely on to do a lot of the affordable projects throughout the community, and combined, and I should suggest taking the first two bullets together, including the third, simple, I guess, but that combined is the $1.4 million you receive annually from HUD as an entitlement city. Now, not all of it goes to affordable housing, and in fact, a lot of it goes to a variety of construction and public service programs, including code enforcement in and throughout the city. But with that, almost 300, or a little over $300,000 is combined and required to be used to satisfy affordable housing purposes, so the 290 and the 45 go to some of those programs that we'll talk about. A million dollars in Cal Home, that was a grant that we received back in 2011, 2012, and then the product of the last two, which is a little over $7.4 million, that's the program that we typically call Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and we were successful in receiving those funds as grants back in 2009 and 2011. Those largely are the funding programs that we administer. As it relates to the NSP, one of the things that's interesting about that program is while we received the grant money, one of the objectives of the program was to spend the grant money, but also spend it in such a way where you can actually recover that grant money by loaning it out. So there's a second phase to the use of a lot of that NSP money, which is to recycle the loan proceeds as the loan proceeds get paid off, then you have an obligation to continue spending that money.
Keith, how much money do we still have left in either of those grants?
I don't have good numbers for you, and in fact, that's why I didn't include them in this presentation, that's something that we're working on, and can share that with the deputy.
Can you, real quickly, $1,865,220 CDBG funds, what are CDBG for? $2,000,000 home funds, what can they be used for? Cal Home Funds, 211, 212, what's it for? Neighborhood stabilization, we've talked about that, I think we know what that's for, there's two of those, the five and the two, like the seven million, but what about the first three?
Isn't that on the next page?
So yes, to answer your question, it's on the next page.
Sorry, Jim, I'm an idiot.
Very good point, because I keep saying, don't leave me to the media and give me stuff that I've never seen before, but you can give it to me ahead of time, and I can read it, and I probably won't have the questions, but I don't know why this can't be given to the council before we have the media.
You know, I do apologize for that, we were unfortunately forced to continue to make edits to this through today, and certainly in the future, we'll make sure that if we can't get it tuned in, we'll continue the meeting to a later date.
It's just helpful to be able to sit down and read it, and not have questions ready for staff that probably could be answered, and then they don't need to be answered, and this kind of, they don't need to be asked or answered. But if we don't have it ahead of time, I don't see that we have a choice.
My apologies again, certainly not expecting direction today. I apologize, sorry about that. So to answer your question, where does Victorville spend the money? Talking about CDBG for two seconds, CDBG is the acronym for Community Development Block Grant Funds. We're actually preparing to open up the application cycle for that, we typically do it at the end of December, conclude the application base probably on January. But to give you an example of programs that have been funded out of that, we funded an extensive amount of improvements over at the Victorville Library using CDBG funds. We've actually earmarked and dedicated money to make significant improvements over at the homeless shelter over on Hammerosa Road. CDBG also gets used to fund a couple of neighborhood, sorry, after-school programs over at the Victorville Elementary School District that's coordinated through your Community Services Department.
As well as code enforcement and demolition activities of the city.
Correct. And in addition to CDBG, to answer the question as to the home and Cal Home, those monies are largely used to fund these programs, these three, the Senior Home Repair Program, which is a very popular program, our Occupied Rehabilitation Program, and our Mortgage Assistance Program. NSP funds are used to spend specifically in target areas who are approved by HUD for the acquisition, rehab, and resale.
They're approved by HUD, but who submitted to them for approval?
It was prepared by staff and approved by council.
I'm sorry, my bad.
So with that, to give a little bit more detail as to some of those programs came in on the Senior Home Repair Program, this one I mentioned is by far most popular, we currently have a waiting list of about 91 people, which we project to be about a three-year waiting list. It's a grant program, one-time grant program, up to $15,000, designed to assist low-income homeowners, 62 years of age, or handicapped or disabled.
I'm sorry, which one is that?
That's the Senior Home Repair Program, the very first one. And that's the one that just is in what we consider high demand, we just can't keep up with it. And, you know, funding source has been a challenge, funding that to a level without depleting the funds for the other programs. On our Occupied Rehab Program, that's very basically a loan made eligible to homeowners, up to $40,000 to make repairs for safety and code violations. That's probably our lowest demand program, I think largely because it's a loan and not a grant is likely one reason. There's also certain equity requirements that homeowners actually have a challenge meeting, just in our underwriting standard being so, a little bit more strict in that regard, so that typically is what turns people away from that program. The Mortgage Assistance Program is a program that we've had for many, many years, but even the demand for that has been falling off, and just this year alone, we've done about six mortgage assistance loans.
What is a silent second?
I'm sorry?
What is a silent second?
It's, it's, it's the same thing, basically.
It's deferred payments, so they are not making active payments on it in order to get the property in a second lien, and then is due upon a sale or a refi.
Basically, you get covenants put on the house.
Do any of these programs create restrictions? Do any of these programs create restrictions on their ability to sell loans?
Yeah, we do record covenants on split malls and some programs.
But it's not a requirement to live in the house for five years or 10 years or something like that?
It had been, and it's evolved. We do require longer periods of time now, and the covenants do broaden longer periods of time. We actually get payoffs to eliminate the lien, so that it, for example, if somebody's living in the home, doesn't want to live there anymore, is moving on kind of thing. Certainly then, there's an opportunity to lift the covenant through the payment.
And the money then goes back into the program right here for another loan.
Just as a question, the mortgage assistance, that loans can be made up to $55,000. So if they want $35,000 for the house, you can give them $55,000, right? Is it a maximum, a percentage of their own?
Again, I don't think it's that simple. I can have staff go into the details.
Another time, maybe?
We can do it right now.
Well, I asked the question when we provided the assistance, if the individual has to pay $49,000. It seemed like to me that they shouldn't have been able to live in the house if they couldn't afford to do better than that. We had to pay $49,000, we didn't qualify for a loan. And my comment at the time in the public meeting was, if we're to help the low-income individuals, it looks like we ought to help three property owners at $13,000 each rather than one at $49, which just seemed like a huge number. And the house cost $116,000, I recall. It seemed odd to me.
So the lower the income category, the more toward the upward limit the applicant would need to actually be able to make that home affordable. Because if you make, see, with the chart, and your family has four, and you make $33,000, you're going to fall very short. And even purchasing maybe about $100, and we don't have them in this range right about now, even a $150,000 home would be out of your reach. So for a very low-income family, the gap assistance would be higher, whereas for a moderate-income family, it might be just a 3% down payment that they would get. And we're required to, if they apply for it, to actually, to our program limits, underwrite and see if that lower-income family can be assisted to purchase that home, maybe a $150,000, $140,000 home, with a final second in the form of $50,000, so that they can then finance through private mortgage companies the first mortgage at their $33,000 a year income. That's when that situation would occur.
To add some illustration.
And the $50,000, we just remain there until such time as?
They sell.
Until they sell?
Yes, or that we learn that they're no longer owner-occupied.
What if they never sell? What if they never sell the home? What if they remain?
It's due 30 years later. And so their term is 30 years, and they don't have to pay it for 30 years. Most people don't stay in their home 30 years, but if they would, they would actually have to pay it after 30. It just doesn't happen. They either refinance in different economic times, or they sell, and then that triggers the payment.
The example that I believe Councilmember Cox is speaking to, another factor that goes into it is the source of the fund. And recalling briefly his example, that was funded out of Cal Home, the Cal Home Grant, which is specifically designed for the very low and low. So we're dealing with, going back to that chart, the lower income, which will actually increase the gap. And as we got that, or as we received that grant, one of the few programs that we got approved to actually spend that money on was through the Mortgage Assistance Program. So part of that was likely also driven by the funding source.
Keith, with respect to these programs, though, the rules and regulations under which we lend this money out are not set by this council as a policymaking body. They're dictated to us by, through the grants that we get. Is that not correct? So we have no ability to change these numbers. These numbers are set through the grants that we get, are they not?
You know, if there's anything we can change, now, we do get everything approved by a program, so it becomes programmatic changes if we want to change it. I have to ask staff, we might be able to change the dollar amounts, the level of assistance that we can offer.
Yeah, we traditionally kept the loan amounts pretty low. For example, our neighboring cities, you can get up and double that in some cases. We ask council when we get programs approved for a higher limit of $55,000, that each loan is underwritten to only provide what that particular applicant needs. They don't just apply and everybody gets $55,000. That's not how it works. Moderate-income households, they probably get a standard down payment out of a $200,000 home, that's 3.5%, like $6,000 or $7,000. That would be a typical loan, depending on the income category of the applicant. A very low-income applicant, which we actually don't get a whole lot of them, but they would, that household would be someone that would possibly need up to the higher of the $55,000. That can be set, that can be reduced here, it can be increased.
But as a function of the percentage of what they get, that still would apply based upon where their income is.
Yes, the percentages that are set by the program, but the dollar amount of assistance can be set here.
Set by us.
It may have the effect of not being able to help the income categories that we actually have to serve. And so staff actually analyzes that. In fact, it was $40,000, so not too long ago, we actually take a look at where home prices are and what is necessary as a typical gap for a low-income family.
Because I think what's important about what you just said there is that as much as we could set different amounts, if the program isn't performing, we don't get the grants, therefore, the money's not available.
Right, it could become unusable. If that were, let's say, $10,000 was the limit, we would not be able to assist, because of the typical price of a home here, we'd probably only be able to assist the moderate-income family household.
Okay.
In each instance, we talked about 30 years to get paid back if it's old. And all of these programs, do we get paid back? Or are some just outright grants?
The Senior Home Repair is actually a grant, is a one-time grant for that program. The owner-occupied rehab and mortgage assistance program are all loans.
Okay. So we only have one that's a grant to help the individuals, the rest are loans?
Yes, sounds on the property.
So the other program that we have, we call it NSP, stands for Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This was the $7.4 million, I believe it was collectively, that had been used for a number of different programs. And we received these grants largely in response to the economic meltdown and the housing crisis, the Great Recession, whatever you want to call it. And it was in large part awarded, not just to us, but cities across the country that had high concentrations of residential development over the boom time that was experiencing a significant amount of foreclosures in the area. And the amounts were largely awarded based upon your ability to demonstrate the high level of concentration of foreclosure in your community. And one of the overarching goals in disseminating these funds for the various purposes was to try to slow down the blight that was occurring in your neighborhoods resulting from foreclosure. So with the over-concentration of foreclosures, it was believed at the time that you're going to see over-concentration of boardups, over-concentration of dried-out landscaping, over-concentration of vandalism, theft, mechanical components of residential units. All the same stuff we actually saw during some of the recessionary period. So a lot of, I should say, a lot of the funds. Some of the funds were used to fund acquisition, rehab, and resale, where we were able to actually go out and acquire properties that were in distress for, in foreclosure, and acquire them, rehab them. That's where we worked very closely with your building and safety department to help develop scopes of work to determine what is necessary to get those units abitable. We also worked with your conservation group to establish drought-tolerant landscaping to try to make the usage of those homes more efficient. And that's a program that we had actually used throughout the city, in nine target areas throughout the community. So then, to just dive into what have we done, what have we accomplished using those programs? One of the things we'd like to point out, notwithstanding the waiting list that we do have, Senior Home Repair Program has assisted over 390 low and very low-income homeowners in making a variety of health and safety repairs to their homes. That's the grant program that we just spoke of. Over the course of its life, we've issued 509 Mortgage Assistance Program loans. Occasionally, you'll see those on your agenda where we're actually reconveying, those silent second notes, if you will, where we're getting paid back or the expired. There was some in the early days where they expired if they lived in the home as a principal resident for a certain period of time. And as the example in the case where we do get paid off, that's where monies actually do come back into the Housing Successor Agency account, where then it's obligated then to re-spend those monies. Currently, right now, the Housing Successor Agency is focusing any cash resources it has on the remediation of the new wave property, because the new wave property was envisioned that one time to be a part of the mixed-use development. And then, as you can see, we had characterized the OOR program, that's the owner-occupied rehab loan program, with low demand. And with that, we've only assisted about 10 households with that program. To give you a sense of, a visual of what we've been able to accomplish just with Senior Home Repair, now, there's a lot of other illustrations, a lot of other examples, as we just mentioned on the previous slide. But this is an example of what we hope to accomplish. And you can see the before on the left side and the after on the right side. And with, not only with our help, with the homeowner's help, but also with our safety department's expertise in knowing what's required out there, we feel like we've made some pretty meaningful improvements, not only to homes, but we've improved life and safety of those actually living in those homes.
Do we publish in the Navy Press, half-page ads or something, drawing individuals' attention to these kind of programs that they can apply for? If I walk into a real estate office, is there a brochure from the city describing these programs, potential buyers can apply? How do we get those names?
Senior Home Repair has been awarded now. Most of them have been mobile, in part, so neighbors can talk them on to the center. As far as the Mortgage Assistance Program, we do have lenders that promote the program to people that come into their offices. So are, and we do have flyers, flyers, but.
Since we believe that with the completion of the freeway in the past, it's going to open up development here, because people won't go on to take a chance of being late to work every day, losing the job, and that'll change when the freeway opens. And we have $15,000 approved lots. We have builders who are going to build. Wouldn't it make sense to go to the builders and say, we have money for you to provide every fifth house, a low-income household, assistance directly from the city? Can we do that?
Well, we have done that using our Mortgage Assistance Program in the past. And in fact, taking it one step further to describe some of the outreach that we do do with the lenders in the community. We actually invite lenders throughout the entire Victor Valley. And we actually host lender training. It's one of the required elements that we have in administering the program, because we don't want to just work with any lender that doesn't understand what our underwriting criterion is. So we'll actually, beyond them doing the marketing and program for us, we actually invite the lenders into our office here to put them through the training so that they can help expand the word as well. And that extends to the builders as well. I'm not sure over my career here that I've seen a lot of builder use, but it has been used.
Yeah, typically in the financing stage, when the lender is approving the individual and seeing what their buying power, they'll usually actually contact us directly and give us the scenario with their applicant and find out about the, you know, go over the requirements and find out if the combination of their loan approval and our second, silent second loan will help this person actually get into a home. So the application process itself, a lot of times, we actually require the same paperwork that the individual is already turning into their lender. So we partner and have approved lenders that we work with after they get the required training. It's usually at that stage when we really get applicants in, because they're seeking the financing.
Lot less lenders today than there were 10 years ago, though.
There are. And we actually just finished, and they're still need to be approved by one of our funding sources, which is Cal Home. But we just revamped them manually. We are going to launch a campaign to bring to our citizens' attention the fact that these programs exist, and kind of go over the changes as far as the dollar amount and such. But typically, most cities have these programs, so a lot of times, individuals or lenders will give us a call and ask if we have funding left, because a lot of cities will actually give out larger loans and their funding actually runs out during the year. So they'll call and check on status of funding if we have still funds available for the year.
Is information on these programs available on our website? I'm looking at Sue.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that if we have programs available, regardless of its housing or otherwise, that information should be available on our website.
Yeah, it's very general. As you know, we, not too long ago, launched a new STLA website, but before it was combined and had all the economic development functions. So there was a launch housing section. So when we transitioned and moved that housing section out of the STLA website, there's a limited amount of information on the city website, which we hope to assume self-enhance.
Okay, thank you.
I was recently told that the county's housing efforts isn't necessarily restricted to incorporated areas, that there's, in incorporated areas, it could. Question, will you ever coordinate these programs with the county?
We have. I think one of the best, you know, the more recent successes we have was actually on a larger scale. And it was a apartment community called Hill Press. We actually did use NSP funds to rehabilitate a very substandard, neglected 67-unit apartment community over at Mojave and Village Drive. And we actually worked with them very closely, where they actually put in the larger senior financing. I think they put in maybe $6 million, plus or minus, I can't remember the exact capital structure. But we used a large part of our NSP dollars to leverage and help actually complete the rehabilitation and revitalization of that apartment.
And some demolition?
Yes.
But only two?
Right, only two single-family homes, which are almost, that are not in a rehab condition. The rest, the other 35, I believe, were actually rehabbed and rebuilt. That's the one.
Yeah, so, yeah, jumping ahead to speak to what we've accomplished largely using the NSP. Just on the single-family component, we've actually purchased and rehabilitated 35 single-family units throughout the city. All but one of those has been sold. So to give example, as we bought, rehabilitated, sold, there's money coming back in. And that's one of the guidance that we're seeking from this council, is now that we're sitting on what we call program income, is actually what the technical definition of it is, we've got to actually put that to use. We're actually obligated to recycle that money and reuse it for unaffordable housing purposes. And we'll get into some of those options.
And Sophie, did I understand your comment that we don't get many applications for the low income?
For the very low.
For the very low?
Right.
What do you suppose?
I think in that income category, perhaps the, number one, the lender that the individual or family goes to sees their income and sees that they maybe qualify for $100,000 and know that that doesn't really exist. So they're just basically, don't know that there's another option to leverage funds against the city funds. Could be credit issues, that the. Could be credit issues that the first lender's dealing with, and/or it could be that the family is just, I'm not sure, just as satisfied.
But on these, on these NSPs, aren't we acquiring them, rehabbing them, and funding the purchase mortgage? Or are we, no, we're not.
No, we're reselling them.
Reselling them.
Right.
Reselling it, so the homeowner has got to go get their own financing.
Yeah, in some cases, they actually may take out a Mortgage Assistance Loan if they qualify, so we can leverage the different programs like that. But they're getting primary financing on the larger part of it.
Even though we have the ability to help folks at the real bottom level, income levels, as a practical matter, the market doesn't exist and we're not doing anything, we're not being able to do much.
Because you saw that lenders, they're willing to do the rest, and they're not willing to do.
Well, if their income is that low, I mean, you know, the first thing they look at, they won't be able to pay it.
Or, yeah, it may be an educational issue, too.
Make any repairs to the home later, or anything, you know.
Well, those folks are paying rent. They're paying rent to somebody.
Exactly.
I mean, they're paying for housing.
The cases where they do know about it, they work with lenders that we work with that are aware of it, and they do make the request, but when the requests come in, that's where you do see the bigger request for assistance.
Keith, I wrote down at the beginning of the presentation, 17 homes in NSP, so this slide says 35. I don't know where the 17, but just a miss.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 17 was what we had on inventory, I believe it was last year when we were told to stop. Oh, we corrected.
2013.
Anyhow.
Oh, okay.
We got our last...
But we only have one left that we haven't solved. Okay, that's what, okay, that makes sense. All right.
Could it be a policy decision of this council to say, "Let's work, let's put our effort into the, into the neediest folks instead of the people who are kind of on the margin and have a chance of doing it on their own without our help"? I mean, one of our problems here is our concentration of renters. We're all concerned about that. It's not the people paying $4,000 a month rent that we're concerned about, it's just people scraping by, and with the element of homeownership, maybe there's something there in a policy decision.
Right. It would have been really focused, I mean, our programs largely have been focused on the promotion of the homeownership.
What I hear is, because I deal with very low-income people, I mean, they're very low, you know, and what they tell me is that the only thing they can afford is to be renting, because if they even consider buying, the money would not be there for them to make any repairs to the home. So if they're renting, they depend on the landlord to make their repairs.
So they're buying a bottom-end house that needs work to move into?
The money's just not there.
Well, you know...
So the ones that really need help, we can't help.
We can't help. They get assistance.
Well, we're not helping, whether we can or not, is a different question.
And that was my concern initially, when we bought a house of $234,000 and then sold it to $224,000. Somebody made up $10,000 to help it sell, and I couldn't imagine a very low or low-income family buying that, qualifying, moving into it. Then there's a half a dozen houses, I can tell you two, that would cost half that, that would be nice homes, that they would qualify for, which didn't make any sense that we were purchasing houses in that category.
Well, it fits the moderate market, which is a market, I guess, that does want our help.
Maybe it does, but I know some moderate income people, because I buy and sell houses, and they don't qualify for loans, not like that. Using a different lender than we go to talk to.
So that very well could be a policy decision for us to deal with.
Right, and with the, with the $55,000 cap that we have right now, we have been able to help some very low applicants. I can give you an example, sort of what Mr. Cox was looking for. We looked at an example of a four-member household in the low-income category, making about $53,000 a year. If you drop that to the low, the very low-income category, and you have a household of four, and to be in that category, they'd have to make $33,000 a year. If you translate that into a mortgage that they could afford, under the definition that we're restricted to, the 30% of their income, they could afford about an $838 monthly mortgage. But that translates to, after you back out things like impound for taxes and insurance, mortgage insurance that's required, is a huge about 675 principal and interest payment. Given a 5% interest rate, that translates to about $126,000 home. So in that particular case, that is very difficult, if not impossible, to find right now. But with your Mortgage Assistance Program being able to assist up to $55,000, if you start putting in a silent second, maybe in the $40,000 range, for example, then you start getting into homes that can be found in our city, you know, for about 165. That's where that dollar amount of assistance starts getting higher to help that very low-income family. And that's, that's a real example, because a lot of times we get applicants that are SSI-pressed, and so they can afford, as you were saying, Jim, they could afford a $900 rental payment. They can also afford a $900 mortgage with that steady stream of income from the government, but that gap in getting into the home is exactly why you have a Mortgage Assistance A moderate-income family could get into the $53,000 a year income family that we were talking about, could afford up to a $205,000 home, translated in into home costs at a 5% interest rate, which is subdueable, and they might need $7,000 down, so they might apply to the program for $7,000. So that's how we look at each individual. You can help with your program right now, that range of individuals. It already exists.
By that logic, thinking that the Mortgage Assistance Program is the most effective way to help at all levels? That's a statement, that's sort of a question. But can NSP funds be used in that way, Mortgage Assistance? So if that's our most effective methodology, does it make sense then to just focus our funds on that?
Well, towards the end, I have, you know, some options that I think can factor into the guidance, because what we would like to do, if we could encourage it, is have programs that were focused perhaps on a larger collective strategic goal, which I think we can accomplish and use along with other funds to do more of this providing Mortgage Assistance. That's an example, and we'll go to that.
Yeah. Because of the different funding sources, we have CalHome Funds available to fund Mortgage Assistance right now, about $750,000. We have home funds available that we get annually that can fund Mortgage Assistance. NSP could be used for that, but quite a few other things as well.
So this, just really quickly, I'm near the end here, this next slide was intended to serve as an illustration of your NSP acquisition, rehab, and resale home, where we, as the city, had bought a single-family residence in town, that's actually one of your building officials vehicles there in the driveway on the top left. And, see the core, both exterior and interior shots, or photos.
That after picture, Keith, doesn't show me much.
It's a dark one.
Oh, yeah.
I guess it's an improvement?
It's dark.
It is, it is.
Will the honor can tell you about the specific one about the family?
Sure, tell me.
Oh, actually, this all was purchased by a single lady. She is on SSI, and she was able to receive Downpaying Assistance through our MAP program and was able to move into her home. So she is a very proud homeowner. One of our other homes, and it's not in our slide, was a two-bedroom, one-bathroom home that was purchased at a very low-income category. It was a very young couple with a child, and they were able to move into their home also with down-paying income.
When you say SSI, what kind of income do they have?
She has Social Security disability.
Right.
So she is a very low-income, but she did have a lender that was able to carry the first note, and seeing that, you know, her income was never going to change, other than their small income.
Yeah, but what is the total annual income?
Her income, I believe, was $850 a month.
Wow. And with that, she was able to afford some of them?
She was able to afford it with our Downpaying Assistance, and...
And she wasn't receiving any other...
She must not have had very much debt, or no debt.
No, she didn't have any debt.
So she had a good, strong ability to repay.
Right. So again, she was able to find a lender that was able to assist her with the first mortgage, and then we came in with Downpaying Assistance for her to make that house affordable for her.
We probably had it somewhere close to $55,000, right? We had it close to a higher limit for the program to help someone in that scenario.
And this is a small home from Village Drive. This was only a two-bedroom, one bathroom home.
Boy, things have really changed now.
There's some really, really nice apartment complexes for low-income homeowners. Is there any requirement, is there any relationship where every rental units we provide assistance that we have homeownership, or is it staff decides, or any policies? Because the ones that I have looked at, the apartment complexes that are rehabbed in the New Orleans, really are nice. They're well-kept. They're well-maintained. It looks like a very successful program. I know we have some houses that I, I have a list, I've gone back, and they're not well-maintained. And it seems like to me that maybe, you say that homeownership is the American dream, I'm not sure it really is, but that sells a lot of people. Maybe we ought to concentrate on the low-income apartment units that are well-maintained, well-managed and well-kept. Any policies at all? Counsel, have you discussed it? Any preference with the council?
Yeah, I guess historically, a large driver in determining what you were going to assist had more to do with inclusionary housing requirements that a redevelopment agency had. There was really no distinguishing renter versus owner, but we have had a longstanding practice of trying to encourage more homeownership, though we did assist with apartment communities over the time. One of the things that we do have to be mindful of going forward, especially as we start implementing as a successor agency, is there are new laws, especially as they relate to the expenditure of funds by housing successor agencies, and similar to all redevelopment laws, where you do have to spend your monies in a proportionate representation of what the arena housing needs are. So earlier in that slide where you had, whatever the number was, 4,200 units, if 20% of them were very low, you're going to have to spend your proceeds to the order of 20% towards the very low. So it's more formulaically driven that way toward your spending of money based on proportionate housing.
So another question, on how much administration, oh, we had the staff, did we take them from those stats?
On all of them. There's different limits on all of them.
Did you raise it?
In the future, maybe we'll see what that is.
Oh, we can tell you what they are.
Why don't you go through them, please?
I'll go back to the right side.
Well, Jim raises a good point, though. We assume that homeownership leads to good citizenship, that owning a home makes us better citizens. I wonder, does anybody know, is that actually true?
I know, because we assume that new schools provide better education for our young, but there's no proof that that's true.
We can give you stats on the proactive code enforcement going through and tell you how many violations we have on homeowners and how many we have on renters.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, that would be interesting to know.
What would it be?
That would be useful.
Pretty neat.
Really?
Yeah.
We don't have a thought in the name.
Yeah, so much for the thought.
And we had a lot more funding back then. But so we, the list of funding sources that we get, the CalHome Funds that we... Yeah, Slide 6. We actually do not get an administration fee. We actually have to spend 100% of that million-dollar CalHome grant on the actual program, on the loans, or the Mortgage Assistance Loans, or the OOR loans. So there we get zero administration. The NSP programs, 10%, we're allowed to take up to 10% admin fee to actually run the program, of the total of dollars that we have available. Thing is true for NSP 1 and 3, those are both NSP programs. CDVG Funds, 20%, administration fee allowable. Yeah, home is pretty low, 5%.
There's also additional programs under CDVG that fund senior and city personnel as well, code enforcement being one.
So that, so those percentages are the actual admin of the program itself, that the CDVG program, and so the views that are on the committee now is an annual, there's always something going on, or in the beginning of the cycle, or in the middle of a reporting year, or at the close of another reporting year. So all year long, there's the administration of those funds and the monitoring of all the spending of those dollars.
And so if the administrative fee doesn't cover the cost of all the admin associated with that, our funds take it from another source to cover it, or automatically have a policy that what's allowed is it, we don't spend anything else?
Yeah, we don't spend anything else. Most of our group is actually diversified as far as funding, so because we wear several different hats, we're funded out of housing and other special funds.
So we're near the end, and we've got two more to go. So really, we brought this forward to you, not seeking actual direction, but we did want to update you collectively about the program, so that you're re-familiarized with the variety of different programs we have, the different funding sources we have, and let's go to the next slide. And one of the things that we wanted to share with you is perhaps what could be considered as the foreseeable options going forward. Certainly, one of the options always in any scenario or any case is to do nothing, and in that case, you know, that's an option here that we've shared with you. We've given some of the discussion about how we've applied the funds, you know, one of the things that we could consider going forward if the council's desirous is to reallocate how we spend some of the funds. For example, in the case where we talked about OOR not being in high demand, perhaps reprogramming that to another program to help ease the demand on another program. That was a thought process there. One of the other options that we have is to modify the approach that we have collectively with affordable housing, and perhaps consider approaching affordable housing on a much more strategic, targeted basis. One of the things that we did do for you is got a map, and, go ahead, talk about that for two seconds. You know, these funds that we talk about, we've been broadly talking about them city-wide, but in large part, they're actually restricted to use in certain targeted areas throughout the city. So CDVG Funds, for example, can only be used in CDVG-approved target areas. It does cover a large part of the city, which is largely driven by census tract. But another example is, and I believe it's in the handout that you have, NSP, for example, can be used largely citywide. There's nine target areas throughout the city that really comprise those target areas. But one example that we can consider, and I think it goes back to the thought process of what triggered the use of NSP, and it was really responsive to a much larger need to eradicate some of the light citywide. Certainly, things have changed in the marketplace to where perhaps there is a sign of recovery. But now that we have program income, and now there's other tools out there available, you know, one of the options going forward could be to consider start focusing the resources to targeted areas in the city, as opposed to a much broader citywide approach, perhaps targeting it to a more defined area, a more needed area in the city. One example that comes to mind, and it's something that we pursued back before the dissolution of redevelopment occurred, but these maps up here, actually the map behind you, highlighting the property on the top right, or on the right side, I should say. You know, what's highlighted in red, and it's hard to see, but I think the point of what you do see is that there's a concentration of properties. We were actually pursuing an effort before redevelopment dissolution occurred, where we were considering, you know, trying to do something meaningful... we were considering, you know, trying to do something meaningful in Old Town as the example. We actually went so far as to draft a specific plan for that area and do one, and it's still sitting on the shelf, and it's something that we were hoping to go forward until the dissolution occurred. But anticipating that to happen, you know, as the RDA, we actually did go out and acquire a number of properties, and we tried to target those acquisitions in certain areas so we can actually amass a meaningful enough amount of property where you can actually do a meaningful project to try to make meaningful impact down there. So with that being said, and that having been an approach of the past, and given certainly some of the commentary that we've heard over the course of the last year or so with respect to the use of NSP and is it still appropriate to use, say, the acquisition rehab program citywide, and perhaps get smaller impact on a larger area, perhaps concentrating those funds along with some of the other funds on a target area like this where we're actually trying to rebuild that perhaps is in much greater need. Another thing that can go along with it is one of the new tools that did come out in legislation this year, and that was SB 107. It's not exactly the way redevelopment was, and it's a lot more difficult to get approved, but this year, the state legislature did bring back redevelopment in a sense, and we can establish a redevelopment project area. This is probably, in my mind, right now, the way I've read it, is probably the best candidate in our city that could actually fit the way they re-broke the rules for redevelopment. But that's something that perhaps can be used in companion with the redirecting of some of these programs. So kind of shared that with you, some of the other things that are in the options, let's go back to the options, is looking at some of the programs, perhaps tightening some of the underwriting standards if you're not comfortable with the way they are, and certainly, and not expecting direction today, but you know, with your guidance, we can certainly come back with further options and more vetted recommendations.
Keith, I have some real quick comments. I appreciate this, I would feel much more comfortable with this program. However, this community has a population of the household income $45,000. The median home price is $192,000. So there are, I can absolutely see some great programs, but why do I, like you were talking about earlier, Old Town, or maybe adjusting the target areas, for example? If there's a way, any recommendations that come from the staff that are a little bit more creative, proactive, how do we target golf course homes that are, have fallen in disrepair? How do we get after Old Town and using some of these available funds? Those are things that I'm looking at. For example, on the golf course, there is a home that has a plywood fence, and I've golfed in one of my communities, and I'm a little shocked by that, and not to say we have to fix all the problems in the city, but, you know, certainly we have a lot of visitors that come through the golf course and Old Town, and many people have expressed, you know, some sadness, not, you know, disappointment or whatever, it's just unfortunate what has happened, but when there's proposals that come up that are being created to redirect funds or to target these particular areas, and I understand what happened with redevelopment. But those are things that, you know, I'm certainly behind, I think, the community of ours. And so if there's a way to repurpose funds or add a target area or two like the Old Town or the golf course, I'm, that'd be fantastic, but it's great, great, great information.
I have one question. We have areas in older neighborhoods that have gaps in sidewalks, where they don't exist, and areas where, I don't know why, but there's no curb and gutter, even though they may be on one side of the street. Those neighborhoods are sliding, and can these kind of funds be used to go in and put in public infrastructure, or is it just the house itself?
We have to have a much more clear nexus to providing affordable housing to a household. So if it's just blanket infrastructure, just off the top of my head, not reading the rules, which put in a curb and gutter to benefit a vacant piece of property and not foreseeing a household benefiting, unless we get a covenant recorded against the property to do so, I'm not sure that that's going to work.
I know that, I know in a three-block area, the city has gone in and put in sidewalks, the curb and gutter was missing, and then repaired, gutter was broken. And you could see the changes already that it's had. I don't know where those funds came from. It might have been...
It's actually local transportation funds. It's funds that would go to transit, but our transit needs are met, so there's excess that can be spent on transportation projects that are not vehicle-related. So it could be sidewalks, it could be bike lanes. In some cases, curb and gutter can be added as well because it facilitates the sidewalk.
Well, talk, we're talking about neighborhood stabilization, let's see if I can do that. Where we have those things that are just totally missing, since it's curb and gutter and so on, that helps the neighborhood, but definitely it doesn't help the individual houses when it's not allowed. I'd like to look at it.
I have another question. Thank you very much.
So at this time, we don't have a recommendation, right?
I need some time to look at.
Yeah, I think we should have it come back after the first of the year, give us some time to absorb this and...
Okay. Then we will move on to public comments, and I do have one card, Bruce Young.
I didn't make a, I think I'm in the wrong forum. I'm talking about affordable housing. We met at the homeless.
Yes.
And you said to contact you, and so anyways, I'm looking, I'm still concerned about homeless, housing for homeless. We've purchased, we are in the mode of acquisition of purchasing 43 acres on Rancho, and out in the undeveloped area near Sheep Creek, and hope to build a campus there. And so I do not know when is the proper time to meet with you.
I will make time for you. You can contact the SEDC and schedule an appointment.
Okay.
Thank you. I believe that's all we have for session meeting. So is there anything else? This meeting is adjourned, and we will be to our 5 o'clock meeting, a closed session.